Turn on the sound.
It's on. It is currently open?
Yes, it's on.
Heavenly Father, we've come before you today, Lord, we just ask for your be with us here today as we go about our meeting, Lord, just give us the wisdom and the desires in our heart, Lord, that would be pleasing to those who we serve and also pleasing to you, Lord. Lord, and as we always ask, we just ask that you place a hedge of protection on our emergency responders and personnel throughout this county, throughout our nation. Lord, and we just ask that you post angels about our military personnel, Lord, that serve us here at home and abroad, Lord. We just ask that you keep them safe and bring them home safely to their families. Lord, and we just ask all this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Here you go. I'd like a motion to approve the September 8 meeting minutes.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried out.
Motion paid in part.
Motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carried out. Everyone get the paper?
Aye.
I bet they be approved?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What do you have for us, Kirk?
Not much, pavement markings. You let me know if yours, either of you two want anything done in your districts. I'm not sure on the, we'll look and see if this meets the minimum. If it doesn't, then we'll rehearse.
See if it what?
Meets the minimum.
Oh.
It should, but if it doesn't, doesn't talk about it anymore. Either you two have anything?
What is the minimum?
I don't know, the last time we did it, I think we did like thirteen miles. And I mean, you know, we got a mile.
Do you have either anything in either of the other districts?
That's, I was hoping to get.
We could do star that we just paved.
Okay. Yeah. Edeline, I would recommend edeline if you do anything centerline, then it's got to be redesigned, everything that's, that does not follow the law. So it's just kind of done really anyway. So I highly recommend just saying with the edeline, it's totally allowed to go.
Star.
Anyway, if you think of something, I'll be calling and arranging it, but I mean, as long as we've met our minimums here, then wherever they come, they won't have a problem doing more, so I think of something, there might be no.
Were you going to plan on doing anything on Quaker?
As far as edelines?
Edelines on Quaker?
I, that's, I was getting your guys' recommendations in your district where you would be wanting edelines.
Well, I've had almost three or four people call in on that, on Quaker, early in the morning to fall during the winter time, you know, so. Not that direct, I mean, southeast or down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only a pavement.
Yeah.
I mean, just that, adding that to it gets us to what we were at before.
I've got one mile of it.
Oh, yeah, you got.
I'm doing that.
Okay, well, you might.
What do you think about the asphalt on that last mile on Quaker? Are you up for that? Because if so, then I need to get them on that, so then depending on when they're able to come do the edelines hopefully. You guys have any, that's all I have to talk about. If you guys have anything other than edelines?
I don't have any.
No, I don't have this one. What do you? Just to fill in a little bit, you know, we talked about what we can do with the health department, numerous repairs, and whether or not it's most feasible to repair or build. And I know Peyton and myself have business centers in different counties, talked with the directors, what would you do differently if you were building again, whatever. Wes had Peyton just come up, I don't know if you saw that, I wrote a grant on what she would like to see, and that was just rough for the moment to see what we're looking at square footage. I think that was a little over six thousand square foot.
Six thousand forty-eight.
So we pretty much tabled it, and then we realized that we probably got over two million available on the sales tax that is for improvements. So I asked Mike just last week, he is so good, I walked out of the courthouse last week and the lady was there, sitting there on the bench, and she pointed to a place on a tree, and it was kind of in the middle of all the trees, but a big limb was just totally broke and just dangling down. Went in and Mike took care of it immediately, came out and took care of it. You know, we talked last year about topping these trees, trimming, so he had that done third party this year, but, so, I asked Mike about if he could just get any idea of what we're looking at square foot, and this is a rough presentation that he put together in just a few days, and if you look on page three, this is star three.
Yeah, from third, if you count the cover sheet, yeah.
Yeah, that's not the one. Yeah, must be. But somewhere it shows a picture. Just got this. On page seven, might be more indicative. Jake, do we have to use the prevailing wage on a project?
What do you mean exactly?
When, if we put a bid out for construction, is it there a federal prevailing wage that is not one thing?
I know there is in Missouri, but I was thinking there's not one, is there?
You were thinking?
I was thinking no in Kansas.
You have to get a federal grant before it comes into effect, I think.
I think Missouri's.
Missouri.
Missouri prevailing wage, for sure.
I don't know that, just because of my husband doesn't.
Well, I'm just going by.
Federally sponsored projects almost.
So if you look at page seven, and our funds were not being federal, you get an idea of more in our region. As Mike pointed out, the first thing we'd need to do is get an engineering study. So how about everybody give this some thought, and if we intend to spend money even for engineering, we're going to have to, well, I think there's enough spending authority in the budget to allow us to do that, but if we, yeah, but if we did any building, we'd need to amend the budget if we're expecting to do any construction next year. So everybody give that some thought, and we'll talk about it next week.
Is this what they have now, or is this what she's proposing?
Proposing. And we'll tell you on that Sally Port, you might think that's an extravagant thing to do, something like that for, she, I remember Betha talking before about how that would be nice to have that for doing immunizations. Did pretty well out in the winter at the stent or out on the fairgrounds, Tony, they improvised pretty good, and those big heaters and such, but one of the places we saw, I think it was Crawford County, it wasn't just that, they used it for storage, and nobody ever has enough storage, so it's not really an extravagant thing to have. And I asked Peyton, I mean, she put that together in a couple of days, so that's just to give us a rough idea. Thank you. Ms. Kirk, tell me, I'll talk through you.
Talk through me, I believe Mr. Manke's handling it.
Oh, okay.
Are you ready for me?
Come on up, yes, sir. You didn't look like Kirk to me, so.
Well, which is understandable, a little taller, a little wider. My name's Ethan Manke, Assistant County Attorney. Good morning, so what I have this morning for you is a legislative proposal, and what it is, is, I don't know if you've noticed, as you frequent the gas stations around the county, on the counters typically up at the very front next to the cash register, you will very often see very bright fluorescent packaging that says magic mushrooms or something similar along those lines. What we found is that those are not your classic psilocybin magic mushrooms that are currently outlawed, they appear to be a different form of mushroom that has a less psychedelic effect, however, they do pose some measure of a psychotropic, a lesser degree of altered mental status, and while that's troubling in and of itself, the main concern is that those are not inspected or regulated by the FDA, and so far they're spanning between two to seven deaths across the country linked to contaminated magic mushroom quote-unquote products. Now, the main active ingredient in that is what is known as Ammonita muscaria, and it's commonly referred to as the Mario mushroom, because it looks like little red mushrooms from Mario for your Super Nintendo days. However, when I was researching into it, it appears that there are several other psychedelic or psychotropic substances that are commonly available, and actually the state of Louisiana had a whole list of different items that they had outlawed for similar reasons, including this Ammonita muscaria. So what I've proposed is I have some bill language attached to the front, as well as behind there, some supporting articles, two from medical research organizations, one from NPR, and what I have in there in the bill section is I have the plants themselves, their active constituents that cause the psychotropic effects, and then a class B misdemeanor for possession of those, and then a class A misdemeanor for possession with intent or the actual distribution of those items. There is carve-outs, because there is some of those that create or have as a natural constituent some things that we actively use in the medical field. There's a carve-out in there for medical exemption, there's a carve-out in there for ornamentation or landscaping exception as well. So we're not out there prosecuting anyone pretending to flower garden, we're not prosecuting or taking their blood pressure medication. What we're doing is we're looking to prevent this psychedelic-ness from moving through the community.
You put this together yourself?
I did.
Have you been in touch, I spoke with Joe Hellwig and Tim Schellberger?
Pardon?
Have you been in touch with our representatives?
I have not. I thought that we would start at the local level and see what happens there, and then move to the state level. I will say that I ran this list through a couple of local pharmacists, and they're the ones that enlisted out which items are commonly used in actual medical practice or prescriptions. There's also a carve-out in there for medical research as well.
Is there something, is this something, I pose this to you and Jake, that we as a board, what do you have jurisdiction over? Countywide?
I think countywi, yes, I think county-wise you could have jurisdiction over.
I commend you for all your work in this and research, and being able to pronounce those words that you, I think the best thing for us is to be able to review this, and a lot of the research has gone into this, appreciate that.
Well, of course, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you guys need anything or any further extrapolations on anything I can do.
Good. County attorneys, all of us draft the resolution for that, or would they, would you refer to that for a resolution?
Mr. Manke and I spoke about this, I told him to draft a resolution, I think there's a proposed resolution in there.
Yes.
I don't know that it's in the exact form, but substance-wise, it's drafted out in there. And you, I don't know if it's stolen, but borrowed from another jurisdiction?
Yeah, that's where that list came from, was the state Louisiana, they had actually had a great many of those things listed out as psychotropic, unlawful psychotropic items. And then actually, when I spoke with two or three local pharmacists, they actually suggested a couple of new things that they had recently had continuing education on, that they believe pose a risk to public safety as well, so those are included.
Do we have an idea of where these are primarily marketed, you said, QuikTrip, places like the convenience stores, is that what you're?
Yes, so, and if I may interrupt with an anecdote, I was getting lunch one day at a gas station here in town, and the lady in front of me, she had a baby on her hip, and I seen her purchase one of those, and what caught my eye was the real fluorescent foil packaging, and after she purchased that and she left, I took a look at it, and I thought, well, this, does this have psilocybin in it? And that's when I looked at it and seen that it didn't have psilocybin, but this other Ammonita muscaria mushroom on this. What prompted my concern with that anecdote was that I don't think, and based upon my research, granted I'm not a medical doctor by any means, but I don't know that that would be safe for a, perhaps a breastfeeding mother, or, those also come in gummy or chocolate or other consumable formats where children would have a very easy and unwitting time getting into them if their parents were negligent in some way.
I guess I'm wondering if we should have a hearing of whether, since they're business people in the community that it would affect, or at least give them notice and opportunity to speak about it.
So this, what you've got here, is in the convenience stores now, here in the county, some of them?
I would say it would take me more time to walk to my car and drive there than it would be for me to buy it. So it would not take long to accrue the Ammonita muscaria, the quote-unquote magic mushrooms here in the city of Columbus, little up the county.
Yeah, I never heard of it, but, of course, you know.
That's why most of us pay a pump nowadays, so it's not exactly extraordinary that most people don't see it, but I, like you said, I was in there getting lunch, and I seen that foil packaging caught my eye.
I wasn't aware of it, and of course, I never heard of it, but I mean, it's, I can see your point, and, you know, I'm not in favor of any of this, that kind of stuff at all, but.
Are there any age restrictions on the purchases?
I would assume twenty-one and over, however, based upon my appearance, they did not ask my ID, but I would hope that there is a twenty-one or older, but I didn't specifically inquire on that, because I was dressed like this, and asking questions like that dressed like this in a convenience store raises a lot more questions.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate what you've done, and I think we'll.
We'll look into it.
Get a copy of this to Peyton, our health director, and give everybody an opportunity to read through it, maybe check with any constituents that might market them, see if they have concerns.
Okay.
It's a good starting point, thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely, if you guys need anything, feel free to contact our office, I'm happy to meet with you individually or come into the meeting and answer whatever questions I can.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to be able to manage the phone for us, or in that? And putting that on conference speaker?
Oh, I think I can, well, others on the system.
We are all.
So who am I calling?
Okay.
Somebody go and stand across the hall.
Would you have someone to make a copy of that for us?
Yeah.
Not urgent.
Okay.
That's for Peyton.
Is that the thing that he just gave her?
I have more, yes.
Paint one thirty.
Can I get one too, Michelle? Thank you. I'm taking it for you.
But just tell her I have the number.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know I called him last week, but I did it at home.
Okay, so I'll try this, I'm not good with this box. I might even try, get one from over.
That just calls for himself on this here.
Yeah, that might be, yeah.
It might go a little farther, Corey, but his table's pushed up against the wire.
There you go.
There's still more, you can go underneath the table.
Sorry. Yeah, good job, Corey.
This is Joe.
Hi, Joe, it's Myra Fraser at the county, and we appreciate you being ready to take our call, your own speakerphone in a public meeting, and the reason, kind of recapping for maybe the people sitting here, we had an amendment to our insurance that was a surprise to us, and we wanted to find out more about it, so if you'll kind of give us a background on how that came to be.
Yeah, of course, thank you for calling, Myra, appreciate you guys taking it. This is Friday morning here, Friday, which my new client, you guys, is maybe to chat with me, yes, so like Myra said, there's actually two documents we need to review. First being the amendment to the, and then there's another amendment for the administrative services agreement with Maritain. Starting with the amendment, as Myra alluded to, yes, the, and the surprise, you guys are not alone in that, the surprise is obviously the number one piece there, medically necessary gender reassignment services. What Maritain's stance is on the medically necessary gender reassignment is that if you are receiving federal funding and you opt out of covering this as a covered service, they are viewing you as being in, out of compliance with the government regulations. So that's why we are recommending approving the medically necessary gender reassignment in that amendment, and that's kind of the number one piece that is on the amendment. Any questions I could answer, or write up about on that one?
It looks like we have no options, guys.
Is that something that you're seeing that all insurance companies are doing across the board, or?
We're seeing it more and more, Maritain's on the early adopters to it, but we are starting to see it more and more across the board, yeah.
Well, if the company.
Kind of as I researched, it seems like every, every time they're to do presidential cabinet things, they'll block back and forth on this, we have not seen it flip the opposite way with this new candidate, so something I'm kind of continuing to monitor, and if it does, we will obviously revisit at that point with you guys.
Michelle, do you have any other documents besides this?
Is it these things? Yeah, those.
This one. Any questions about that? I think we have an understanding of it, Joe, nothing we agree with.
Okay, and again, sorry to apologize, I just sent down without the additional dialogue there, I will make sure to get ahead of that going forward, where you guys aren't kind of blindsided on it, so. The only other piece is, and I sent this down, is the amendment to the administrative services. We are on one year, you know, with Maritain, I know you guys have been with Maritain for a very long time, and that you've been with them since 2008, I believe. Maritain seems to still be running really well, the network is a very strong network for you guys, this is just their updated articles and fees. What I illustrated when I was down there doing renewal is what is lined up here, basically that main piece there, the administrative services fee for at the choice, network access, and then the other pieces there, the per employee per month is fifty-four ninety-seven going forward, that went up just by a few pennies, and I mean, pull up what it was last year, just so you know the difference there, apologize, I should have had that up in front of me, it was just barely an increase, though. Yeah, so in the previous year, it was fifty-three forty-seven, so yeah, just went up by about a dollar there.
No other changes, so? I've been made?
No, no other changes there, everything else is, everything else on that administrative services agreement is lined up, the same as what it has been in the past. We've been on one-year terms, the one, one option we can do, if we ever wanted to look into it, to kind of spread out these increases, is a three-year term. It's very, very small dollars in the grand scheme of what you're paying, and I, when you go to a three-year term. And when you go to a three-year term, the worry there is if you ever didn't want to make a change and it was in the middle of that three-year term, you have to pay back part of the administrative services fee that you haven't, that you haven't reached yet. So if you turned after one year and you had two years left, there would be a penalty for that. I always recommend doing that one year just in case there ever was an opportunity that we wanted to make a change from Maritane.
It would be a ramble with that, right?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, Jake?
I don't.
Joe, I think we have the information we need. We appreciate your time. We'll get these executed.
Yeah, appreciate you guys. And if anything else comes up, please let me know. And I'll be back down here in a couple months. We'll do kind of a plan review of last year. I'll make sure to get on the agenda here for later this year to do that.
Okay, we appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Have a great day.
You too. Bye-bye. Michelle, do you have any? I've marked up all this.
Yep.
So we have two items here, the amendment to the administrative services agreement from September one this year. Yeah, it's not, I thought it was extending it. It's not.
I would make most allow the chair to sign the amendment to the administrative service agreement.
Do you have a second?
Sure.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to carry you down. And our approval of coverage for amendment four to our employee benefit plan as discussed. I would move that not be approved.
I'm just going to walk out of there, but evidently, and then we do vote.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Check your vote.
Aye.
Motion to carry you down. I remember someone being thumb printed to cash a check or something decades ago and I thought, I will never do anything like that. Missouri sent my license renewed and the requirement for that year was to be fingerprinted before Kansas started. Thanks, Joe. We just signed that as a witness. I know Sheldon called me, Sheldon Leonard, or Sheldon Peters, to see if he should be here. And I said, that's up to him. I just wanted to bring up a discussion. Not necessarily looking for action today, but I do want to wait on that one since he did call.
Okay.
And you do the opioid?
Yeah, so I sent out a contract, our settlement agreement last week. I had to go to the commissioner and ask the guest to review that for consideration today. It's participating in settlements with one of the opioid manufacturers, I think it was Purdue and the Safflower family. The A D's office primarily handling that. So I touched base with them and made sure it was something that we needed in time. They agreed that in our best interest, sign, ask them to do something.
That firm actually called me this last week. Letting know that line was getting close and I let them know that we discussed this.
Yep.
They didn't reach out about the settlement. Just takes the chair, so you can.
Um, I can, he signed it if you guys want to authorize me to.
I would make them sign to authorize our county council to sign the opioid settlement agreement.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to carry you down. Terry, do you know if Sheldon's going to be here?
He is not going to be able to make it. He called me a little bit ago and he's not going to be able to get away.
The reason I put this on the agenda, I just, I have always been uneasy about the way we do our tagging of those ambulances. I know why we do it. We do it to save an incredibly large amount of money on sales tax. I mean, a $300,000 ambulance, that's $30,000. But I've just always felt that, I don't know if it's honest, I don't know if it's legal. And I have to say, in light of you guys not having public meetings anymore, it makes me even more of a desire to make sure that we're at least doing things right on the county side. So I just, I guess probably need to address this with Jake. I think we have three ambulances now that are.
All eight of the ambulances are titled in the county's name and tagged with government tax.
Okay, Heather thought, or one was not, that it's in the association.
No. No, they all are.
I don't know why she would have pulled that up. And I checked with the clerk's office. We don't have any record of having a copy of the insurance that the association carries.
Okay. I can send that to her.
Okay. Is the county named on it as an insured?
Yes.
That's all I would ask today. I mean, I want to explore this a little bit further, but.
I will say that whenever this was done, back in like 2011, somewhere in there, the commission at that time asked me to reach out to K Camp to find out like the legalities of it and stuff. And at that time, our insurance representative was Jess Fennell. And he's told me that, yes, that was very common in the state, that they have several entities that do it that way. He said, but that those entities have to carry their own insurance on the vehicles. That K Camp does not cover that and stuff. So that was, like I said, that was back in 2012, 2011, somewhere in there when this was first done and stuff, so.
So I'm trying to remember. I don't remember us being asked to sign off on a sale. Do you?
So the county owns the ambulances?
The ambulances are titled in the county's name, yes.
We don't pay for them. Is there somebody at the ambulance association that you've stepped out and called that they can email to the clerk the copy of that insurance?
I have it. I can email.
Oh, you have it now?
I have it. I don't have a copy of it with me, but I can email it to Taylor as soon as I get back to my office.
Do you have any concern about us having an insurable income without having any financial equity?
Having them be county property creates liability for the county, obviously. They're insuring if we're named as an insurer. Just from a liability management standpoint, I don't know how much we're saving the ambulance association on tag, you know, tagging or whatever. But we're assuming a lot of liability to save that much money.
I don't know. I know that sales tax, I don't know. That, like I said, that was done years ago before I was in the position that I'm in. So I don't know if we pay like property taxes on them every year or, you know, with the tags and stuff. I don't know.
I assume you guys are 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, aren't you?
We are 501(c)(3).
I think, I think you would get some exemptions on those taxes with 501(c)(3) status, wouldn't you?
I don't know. That's something I haven't looked into because up until now, it's been, you know, that's where they were. They were already switched before. And so.
That's why they did it, was to avoid the sales tax. That's exactly why they did it.
Right. So I will put this back on the agenda for next week and you're going to email us copies of the insurance? And you might check into whether that's exempt. You think it is, Jake?
I mean, I have to look at it, but there's a lot of exemptions for 501(c)(3)'s.
You don't have any idea what liability coverage is?
I know that every ambulance has over a million dollars worth of coverage on it.
Liability?
They, as far as which, I don't. They carry a million dollar coverage on every ambulance. And then we have the, like, property and.
Property damage would be more than, a need for more than half a million, I would think. So I wonder if that is liability, but all the more reason that we, I mean, those should have been on file in the clerk's office all these years. But as long as we get it cleaned up, we're.
Do we have any kind of lease agreement to the association for those?
I have never seen one.
They've been bought outright, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm looking at the county leasing them to the ambulance association.
They've, they've spent the money.
Right, and but now the county owns them.
Right.
And we lease them to the ambulance association.
That's basically what Jess said.
That lease, okay.
When I talked to him years ago about it was that, like, there's several entities in Kansas that do it. And then the county basically like leases the ambulance to the service for like a dollar a year.
Yeah, I think we need to have that in place. If we don't.
Yeah, we do that and make sure we have enough liability insurance. I'm good with it. I just, okay.
I know it's higher than what the sheriff's department vehicles, or double than what the sheriff's department vehicles are on insurance, according to K Camp. Because I questioned that if we have enough too. And so I was like, where do I go to find that information? So I called K Camp to find out what the sheriff's department vehicles work, that's only like emergency vehicle that I have to compare that to and stuff, so.
That sounds like a solution.
Will you draw up that lease agreement, Jake?
Yeah, can you get me descriptions on the vehicles and?
Do you want me to send you copies of the insurance cards too? That way you have.
Any perfect customer, have your.
Years and bin numbers.
Bin, yeah.
But we're going to need to settle in on a minimum liability to put in that lease.
Right.
So, starting point, get the information to us and.
Okay. Yeah, I will get that emailed to, I'll email the stuff to Taylor and then I'll also.
I don't know that we need to look at it and say, oh, that's okay or it's not on liability. We can set that now and you can be working on the lease. Because that's the only missing information, isn't it?
Do you have any what insurance they're required to carry?
Right.
Who sets those requirements?
What, Corey?
Who sets those requirements?
We would. I mean, you have your minimum liability from the state, but we want way more than that. And of course, they already have way more than that if they have a million, but. What are your thoughts on?
Let's say if you can email it over and we can get a copy of it and discuss it maybe next week or maybe Taylor can email that out to us. That way we see. You think you got a million dollars for ambulance?
Yes, sir.
So basically a million dollars per occurrence.
Yes.
Are these worth, something worth having a conversation with K Camp about? I mean, they're going to be more knowledgeable on what those types of claims look like, what kind of liability we're exposing ourselves to.
Well, let's not have you kind of, you know, please in a hurry. We'll gather this information this week and you talk about it next week. I'm glad you mentioned that lease. That just sums it all.
It's my one for the night.
Do you?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask, just off the top, for no parent, no reason other than just information, why they no longer have open meetings at the ambulance association?
I can add to the conversation. I was secretary for seven years on the ambulance until two years ago and it was, it was always open then. In fact, we invited people to come and I don't remember ever refusing anyone to come, ever. So this closed meeting thing is, is brand new. I talked to Doug, who was the former, and he's really retired and so that's all I could get from him. It's the new guy's terms. So personally, I'm hoping they will change that, that they will open the meetings. Because that's only right in relation to taxes that I pay, that we all pay, and services. And as far as I knew until the time that I resigned after seven years, we had nothing to hide. And it seems to me, you know, it makes it feel like there's something not going on that I don't know. So that's my two cents.
Any comment, Terry?
It was presented to the board at the last meeting. They didn't make a decision on it. The president, Sheldon, was part of the discussion.
To make it open or closed?
Mm-hmm.
And you haven't made a decision?
They have not made a decision.
When was it closed?
I assumed that that's the way it was before.
How would you assume that?
Because it's a private business.
Oh, you thought it was closed for all that time?
If it's a private business, then why are we giving them the land to build a new building?
I was told in January I could come to the meeting if I wanted. I was told in August I was not allowed to come to the meeting.
Not just land, but $650,000 a year?
That was my next question.
$300,000 extra this year for the ambulance?
I mean, I'm paying a half a percent sales tax to the ambulance.
Well, not for all of that, no.
Well, I mean, okay, $650,000. It seems to me that, that I should be able to go see where that money's being spent.
I agree. I think it should be transparent. I tell you, at this point, if the board even does vote to open it up, I have no confidence because I'm thinking, okay, are we going to be in a meeting and invoke an executive session for no reason? You're not subject to coma, so you don't have to have a legitimate reason. Is it, is open really going to be open? I just, I'm just shocked to find a need, why there would be a need to close the meetings is very, very concerning. That's their board. Anybody have any other business?
Sounds like we need to get some members from the board in here, let them explain. Go along with Corey's, but we'll comment on that.
Ron, I had asked you, when you were last here, you were going to bring it up to the board and then they didn't open it to let us know why. So I don't know if we're going to get a legitimate answer from anybody. You've got the director here. If the director doesn't know...
You've got the director and then you've got a board. A board, well, that kind of runs the thing, so...
But Tony's not on the executive board. You've got two boards. There's the executive board and then Tony's on membership board.
Yeah, there are two boards. The executive board's the, the president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, that meets monthly. And then they have a membership board of quite a few that meets once a year for the dinner to hear all the good stuff.
They have a very small group of people making the decisions.
Well, theoretically, the, they bring it to, if it's, if it's a certain amount of money over, then they send out an email to the whole membership to say, we want to buy an ambulance and this, we've got the money and is it okay, type of thing. So there, and I, I believe the membership board, anyone from them could go to the executive. I always assumed that, but that would be another question to ask, is can anyone on just the membership board attend an executive meeting?
You know, the second largest entity that we don't govern, that we subsidize is the extension office and they get about a third of what the ambulance association does. They send us an agenda and minutes of their meetings just as a courtesy and I've never, it's not just their door hasn't been open, they've always encouraged, encouraged people to attend, just...
Can they fall under coma?
Go to your council meetings and they'll encourage people to come. I don't know about school boards, sometimes.
The extension office falls under coma. I, I requested the information and got it.
Might be more interested in discussions on their part during budget here next year.
So the executive board, will they be the ones that make the decisions whether the meetings are open or not?
Apparently so, right?
I'm guessing.
They were going to vote, you said they were going to vote on it, but they didn't vote on it.
They talked about it at the last meeting, but there was no decision made.
That is a decision.
I'm sorry?
That is a decision. That was a decision.
To postpone it, the decision?
The lack to, of, I mean, they brought it up and didn't do it, but...
But there, is there something that states they're closed in minutes or in, uh, bylaws? That would be a good question, I don't know. I don't think there is, but I don't know now. I gave all my stuff back.
Well, something to be addressed, you know, tax payer's dollars if you want. Executive board up here, ask them.
Well, Sheldon was unable to make it today. I mean, I did not ask him to be here. He called me and asked if he needed to be and I told him that was up to him. I just was going to start a discussion about these tags and I'm just thrilled that that got resolved because that's fixable. We don't need to be spending $30,000 them or us. It all comes from the community, one way or another. If we can get around that legally, and it sounds like we can, so... That's a plus today, but it is very concerning. I don't think we have any authority to get them here. Terry, you've been with it too long to be so vague about all these questions.
I'm sorry?
You have been in the ambulance association too, too many years to be so vague about these answers, not knowing, not knowing when they close the meetings and not knowing whether it's in the minutes or in the bylaws here, in this director. I, I don't buy it. You ought to be more knowledgeable than you are.
I don't know why that you would assume that, I, I don't know why you would assume that I would know that stuff because up until a year ago, I was just an employee. I still am just an employee, but I was just a paramedic that worked on a truck. I, I wasn't...
Did you ever attend any of the meetings?
Maybe one or two in thirty years.
Is Doug associated with it at all now or are you...
He still works part-time.
Part-time director?
No. Just a part-time employee.
He'll drive, something to do, drive in an emergency. He's kind of a backup guy.
Doug was always very knowledgeable, so... So do you want to ask them formally to come again or do you want to drop it? What's your pleasure?
Matters not to me, other than, I mean, we want to get an answer. Get the board, the executive board here.
Are you unable to, you know, when I asked you last meeting, you said you would take it to the board?
Yes, ma'am.
And you took it to the board and I asked you then if they did not want to open it, would you come back and tell us why?
And I, and I told them that.
But you're unable to tell us why.
They didn't give me a reason. They said that they weren't going to make a decision on that right now, that they were going to research it, I guess. I don't. But they were, they were informed that of what you requested and that if they chose to keep the meetings closed, that somebody from the board was to come up here and let you know why, so...
I said we're being taken for in big time.
Send out a request and see what they're responding.
Pardon?
Send out a request and see what they're responding.
Well, let's put it this way. We request that somebody be able to tell us at the next meeting, somebody of authority that knows, be it you or be it somebody from the executive board, to give us reasons and let us know whether it's in the minutes or, and or bylaws. And when it was put in the minutes and or bylaws. Do you think of anything else? I don't care who comes, I'm looking for the information.
What percentage of funding does the ambulance service receive from the county?
Overall. Like, from the county or how much does it contribute toward our budget?
Of your, yeah, of your budget, what percentage comes from the county?
Roughly thirty percent.
And the rest is from revenues collected?
Well, that's our request. Our next meeting, somebody. We don't care who it is. You don't have to wait for a meeting because you're not under coma. You know, call these guys.
Can you get a copy of their budget?
Um, we have had a copy. Yeah, they have provided that. Anything? Chuck, do you have anything?
No.
Anybody have anything for us? I would make a motion that we adjourn. Oh, wait, no, I don't. I do not. I take that back. Did you have anything?
No.
I would like an attorney-client executive session for ten minutes with our counselor to, um, last until 10:00. Motion in a second. All those in favor?